I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a land acknowledgement.
Please chair.
We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and stewarded the lands and waterways of this county with great care, and who continue as sovereign nations today, specifically the Squawson, the Squawali, and Chehalis people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt the ongoing erasure of injustices done and remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth.
Thank you. Next up is approval of agenda. Is there any motion or any proposed changes?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion in second to approve the proposed agenda. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Does this include the agenda for the public hearings or do we take that up separately?
It is, although we confirm that with them all being set at 3:30 simultaneously, we have the latitude to reorder them.
Okay.
So if that's what you're asking about, we don't need to make a change.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up are our presentations, and we have three consent proclamations today. First up is, I think, a kind of a convo of Veterans Day and Military Family Appreciation Month. Kim.
Good afternoon. Kim Burnett, Director of Central Services. We're actually going to do three proclamations, and the first one up will actually be National Adoption Day. And this is going to be presented by Kristin Jensen, the Superior Court Administrator.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank the board for your support and for issuing the Adoption Day proclamation. As you know, there are many types of difficult matters that we handle at the Family and Juvenile Court, but the adoptions are a joyous occasion that help us to balance that workload. Currently, more than 700 children in Washington State are legally free to be adopted. This year's celebration marks our 21st annual Adoption Day celebration. There will be six families celebrating their adoption as part of this year's event. Our Adoption Day Celebration Event will be at the Family and Juvenile Court Building. That's going to be on November 20th at 4:00 p.m., and we invite everybody to come and to celebrate with us. Any questions?
Questions?
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the board for issuing this proclamation today. I was fortunate enough to attend the Adoption Day Ceremony last year and speak as, you know, a person who has lived experience being adopted. And so I just appreciate everything that the court does, and it really can't be overstated how much joy it brings to, you know, realm where there are often a lot of difficult and challenging situations you have to deal with. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
I would just say that I know I've been to the event before, and it's awesome, and I always try to come. I know the commissioners will all be returning from the county conference in Spokane, so I don't know if any of us, I won't get back in time. I don't know about my seatmates, but I know we'll try to get there if we can.
Thank you.
And if we're not there, that's why. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a proclamation for Veterans Day and Military Family Appreciation Month. And we have Crystal Beeler, who is the Commander of VFW Post 318.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here today. As a veteran, I can tell you Veterans Day means something special. It is not just another holiday in the calendar. It is a day that reminds us why we served, what we stood for, and who we stood beside. For me and for so many others that wore the uniform, this day is about connection. It is about remembering those long days and nights, the times away from our families, the moments when we tried, when we were tired, scared, and unsure. We keep going because we had to do a job, because we believed in something bigger than ourselves. When you serve, you make sacrifices that most people will never see. You miss birthdays, holidays, graduations, anniversaries. And for some, you form bonds, real bonds, with people beside you. Those friendships don't fade. They become part of who you are. Veterans Day gives us a moment to reflect on that, to remember those who we lost and to honor those who made it back but still carry an invisible wound. This day also reminds us that what we did matters. Sometimes, when we hang up that uniform, it's easy to wonder if people remember, if they understand what service really means, when someone says, "Thank you for your service," or when we gather like this. It reminds us of our country hasn't forgotten. It means more to people than they will ever know. Veterans Day isn't just for those who served. It is also for Americans. It is a reminder of the price of freedom. Freedom isn't free. It has been paid for again and again by those willing to stand the line, to protect the values that hold dear no matter the cost. So today, I stand proud, proud of my brothers and my sisters in uniform, proud of those who came before us, and proud of those who are still serving. And I am grateful. I am grateful for this nation and for the chances that have played its small parts in defending it. To my fellow veterans, thank you. Thank you for your courage, your service, your sacrifice. You've earned the right to hold your head high. And to everyone else here today, thank you for remembering us and honoring us and for helping us keep alive the spirit of what Veterans Day truly stands for. May we never forget those who gave everything. And may we continue to live in the way to honor their memories. Thank you.
Any veterans in the...
Always do it.
Dabra.
I've been working for events for the last two days.
Are they covered in those items then? Can you measure? All right. So we'll move to public comment. This is related to items on the agenda. We'll have an open public comment period very shortly on general matters, but I'm going to go through the guidelines. The Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. When introduced or when called, introduce yourself and the address you reside in the county. State which agenda item or number you're referring to for this first piece of public comment. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. You have three minutes to address the board and may not donate that speaking time to any other person. Please be respectful. The board does not directly respond to public comment, but the county manager may follow up with specific items on an as-needed basis. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity for good cause to address the meeting. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. Withhold remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. And all written materials provided may be considered public records subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of the revised Code of Washington. Thank you for cooperation on that, and I have Terry Ballard signed up for this piece.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I am a 35-year veteran with 29 years towards an active-duty retirement, retiring in 2012, expending another 12 years as a veteran service officer locally for the disabled American veterans. The service officer you have in mind for the out of the Washington Department of Veterans Affairs is false. You shouldn't be required to have one. I have a Senate Bill 5358, and let me read you the Senate Bill. Subject to amounts appropriated, the WDVA, Washington Department of Veterans Affairs, is required to provide grants to counties in order to develop or expand veteran service officers' program, peer-to-peer counseling, la da 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 da. Why are you contracting out of the WDVA when they're supposed to be providing you a grant for that person? This, and I tell you what, these people that address this bill, okay? It was also discussed in Washington Department of Veterans Affairs under the Veterans Legislative Coalition, which was part of this meeting, okay? Next, okay? Next, about veterans and about services. We need the services. In 2023, we have over 13,783 people that have a disability, okay? We need these services, but we don't need illegally paying it out of RCW 73.08, which is the Veterans Emergency Fund for Veterans in Need, okay? We're not supposed to be paying building rent $30,000 a year for three years out of this fund, and also doubling that amount in paying for space out of the 413 Lilly, okay? The 413 Lilly. We pay extra space there. We pay space for there. For what? For an emergency services that is being raped with administrative fees. There are more administrative fees going out than the budget itself. We have carryovers that are never done, never carried over, okay, and never used. So, and that's in the neighborhood of $1.3 million. So why are we carrying over something and paying for something that continues to build? And for the fact of the, with the House Bill, I have the House Bill here marked for you. And I will be writing all these senators and everything that endorse this bill as well. And let me remind you of one thing and one thing only to finish and close. You are responsible. You are liable for anything that's not, anything that is an expenditure or issuing such a warrant. Your bond is liable for anything illegally that you fund, okay? And I'd like to see your bond go, because what happens when your bond goes, you go. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom on a matter on today's agenda? Online, anyone here for public comment as to an agenda item from the online folks? Okay, then we will move to county manager's update.
I have nothing to report today, Chair. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have consent items 1 through 15. Any requests to remove an item? I move to approve consent agenda items 1 through 15.
Second?
Motion in second, non-debatable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For general matters, we do not have any department items, so we'll jump right to that. And same advisements apply, other than you don't need to say what you're referring to on the agenda. And Mr. Pettit, you're up first with Mr. Ballard on that.
Being that I have to talk, my name's John Pettit. I live on Rich Run. I have to talk and address an issue a little later at one of the public hearings they're going to have. I am going to keep it fairly light, and one of the topics, of course, that you always are enjoying at this time of year is the budget issue. And because you chose, again, to go to a biennial budget, you know, I'm like the next guy. I don't like any more taxes than necessary, but I like taxes for the things that I want to have. I like the benefits that I get when I'm receiving good service for them. As such, your biennial budget that you have is really designed to be set as when you order it under 3640-100, estimates of expenditures itemized and classified as required, and as finally fixed, adopted in the detailed by the Board of County Commissioners shall constitute the appropriations for the county for the ensuing year. And every county official shall be limited in making expenditures upon such. You're doing a biennial budget. You're doing it for two years. I don't know. It's a pretty hard time to do things for two years. I mentioned about doing one. I also am mentioning this because two more issues. One has to do with the excess expenditures. Many of your elected officials out here, they're mandated by state laws to their duties to do. In other words, they need to do it. As such, if they don't have enough budget to do it, that means they're personally liable for the costs to do it. In other words, if you need another employee that's not registered or element a part of the budget, that official is responsible for it. Now, I'm not sure that, right now, with laying a budget extremely tight and numbers and FTEs, that's always a fair particular item for an elected official to be responsible for the budget amount. I'll be happy to give these, and she can make copy and give them to you. The other particular thing is, of course, like always, I like to have a budget book ahead of time. And apparently, I need to have it before the end of the week in order to meet the two-week timeframe requirement that the state law requires for a preliminary budget to be handed over so a citizen can have it. I'm formally requesting as such. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Mr. Ballard, you're up.
My name's Terry Ballard. I live in Tanglewild, which is an unincorporated part of Thurston County. To extend what Mr. Pettit said, RCW 3640-130, provided shall not be a liability of the county, but the official making or incurring such expenditure or issuing such warrant shall be liable, therefore personally, upon his official bond. There was an oath. "I, Ty Menzer, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge these duties of office." You are not in compliance of that, Mr. Menzer. Neither are most of you, okay? Violations of law. This is outside the county seat. It's been established that it's been outside the county seat. When the county was sued by Olympia and Tumwater, that anything that existed in 1861 is within Olympia is the county seat. This property was annexed to the city of Olympia in 1964. Little bit shy of 1861, wouldn't you say? So in excess, we have a statement of what one does not know to be true. It's a false statement. That's a gross misdemeanor. We have another one, false reporting. That's another gross misdemeanor, okay? Then we have at the county seat. At is just like beat up. But I got a solution for you. At the county seat, clerk of Superior Court, at the county seat, prosecuting attorney, county sheriff, county treasurer, auditor, all at the county seat. Now, you have to hold meetings at the county seat. At the county seat is not near. It's not far. I connected the dots here. In RCW 3616.090, it states that you have to provide offices, the county officers, you have to provide space in their respective courthouses, and you may provide additional offices elsewhere for the officers at the board's discretion. Okay? Well, I just established that in the courthouse was the county seat. With this, and this goes back to 1854? Really? Okay, so who's going to be liable for all this movement and everything? Your bond, and I hope it goes away. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom on general matters, public comment? Anyone online for public comment as to general matters? Okay, community reports from commissioners, any volunteers?
Went to, since last week, attended the TCD certificate of appreciation for 43 years of continuing services, and this is for the amateur radio. So, great job, Commissioner Menzer. Attended the Play Test See and Win, which is the app that is being used by the fan zones. And so we did a test run. The app officially launches in March, and we went to a couple of areas. And we went to a couple of areas. I was in Commissioner Menzer's team, and so we we did a little walking tour of some of the areas they've chosen. Did the commissioner tree planting at the Raph Monroe Trail. Just a huge thanks to Bob and to all the volunteers. And I did that with all of the board, all of our board. Attended the Thurston County Home Buying Expo as well as preserving a living memorial to our veterans. On Friday, I was at T R P C council interviews all throughout the day. And then the day before, I did meet the finalist for for them and met kind of all all the people who were interviewing for it. Glad to announce that we did choose a finalist. And we, I think it got announced on the jolt. And so our chair is going to be negotiating with with the finalist on on that. Did a meeting with the tribes about FIFA and then also attended the Naco twenty-twenty-five outlooks for local governments and budgeting as well as inner-city transit and also did the National Association of Counties Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee.
Since last week, attended new employee orientation with a few of my fellow commissioners. Over the weekend, I went and spoke at an unveiling for a mural in Yelm for Sergeant Sean Collins, who was killed in Afghanistan in two thousand ten, and got to unveil that and speak alongside his mother and a general helmsman from the Army Corps of Engineers. Attended the tree planting with all of you. And I thought that was fun. I keep saying that. That was fun planting the trees. And then went to Veterans Court graduation today, where the Tenino F F A did a really, really cool presentation to each of the graduating veterans from the court and gave them some care packages and some monogrammed coffee mugs. And it was it was pretty it was pretty moving ceremony. Judge Buckley always does a great job. He had a pretty heartwarming speech that he gave that kind of tied his family's history into the Veterans Day and the court system. So it was a great job.
Let's see. So I attended the boards and committees. I attended, I put my glasses on so I can actually see my. The National Association of Counties Health Steering Committee, also the National or Naco Healthy Counties, attended a special meeting for the Thurston Mason B H A S O. Attended the Thurston County Fair Board and got to hear got to hear some presentations on people who want to be on the fair boards. That was neat. And let's see, there's going to be an eagle for the mascot for next year. So that's pretty exciting. And it's fun to listen to all of that. Attended the Transportation Policy Board today. Also attended new employer orientation. Got to attend the drug court graduation, celebrating, you know, accomplishments of those in recovery. And it was very neat because a couple of people I know who worked very hard graduated. Attended along with others, the Amateur Radio Emergency Services, which was completely new to me and was really great to attend. And the tree planting, the Yelm Chamber Forum. This week had the state of the schools. And so got to hear from our superintendent of young schools a little bit about the strategic plan and what we're doing after the failure the third time of the levy. Attended yesterday the Good Earth and Democrats of Jubilee meeting and got to introduce Dave Up the Grove, our Commissioner of Public Lands, and spent some time with him yesterday. And so that was really great. And then today, attended the Thurston County Chamber Forum. And that's it.
Question for you on the fair board?
Yeah.
Did you guys, did they do interviews for all those applicants?
They, we did.
So you'll have some insight?
Yes, I did.
And they'll make recommendations to us?
Absolutely. Yep.
We have a good crop of applicants, so.
Yeah.
Can we turn calls?
Thank you. So some of my items are the same as my seatmates. I attended the drug court graduation last week. The room was overflowing, so I listened from the hallway, which was amazing to see all of the support for everybody who was graduating. The Naco Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee I attended with Commissioner Mahia. The committee received an update on Operation Green Light, which is a national campaign that Naco does, encouraging counties to display green lights in support of veterans, which will mark its fifth anniversary in two thousand twenty-five. So their goal is next year to engage five hundred counties. So I'll be bringing that forward to the board for your attention. There's a sample proclamation they have available. I know we do a lot of different proclamations, especially in the month for for veterans, like we've seen this month, quite a few. But it would maybe be nice to incorporate some of the components of that initiative and maybe display green lights next year. It's from November fourth through the eleventh. And so just to spread awareness about, you know, Veterans Day and acknowledge the the sacrifices made by our veteran community members. Naco staff also reported during that meeting on the ongoing federal government shutdown FEMA reform acts to improve disaster assistance and reimbursement processes and pending federal funding challenges that may require supplemental appropriations in the coming year.
Green light thing, I think we've done because I remember seeing the green lights and I didn't know what it was.
Forward too.
I was like, whatever those been, then I learned about.
I want to give an update from Susan because both me and Commissioner Grant did ask. And so she she sent us. And she said that she spoke with the facilities team about the Naco Green Light Campaign for Veterans Day. And they mentioned that the exterior lights at the atrium are L E and can't be switched out easily. And so in two thousand twenty-three is when they tried adding it, adding colored pixie glass to get the same effect, but unfortunately they heated up and had to be removed. So yeah. So Susan says they'll continue to look to source lights ahead of next year. And in the meantime, they were sharing information about our their veterans assistance, our veterans assistance services. So just wanted to highlight that our staff is already on it and and working on it. And thank you, county manager, for helping coordinate that.
Like those projectors of the Christmas lights that they have, which is turned green? That would be good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it was, yeah, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I appreciate you, Commissioner Grant, for that update. I was not aware of that, so that's great to know. We're already informed. We also had a solid waste advisory committee meeting last week. We reviewed the draft two thousand twenty-six work plan, and we received updates on some of the key programs and projects that our public works team is working on. The two thousand twenty-six plan will include some components. We've discussed circular economy presentation, a Sutter Metals Facility Tour and the start of the Solid Waste Management Plan Review. We also discussed the Hazel House reused programs pilot year, which showed really positive engagement. And there's hope that we can expand that program in two thousand twenty-six. We also received some updates on some of the projects, which I've been updating, and our public works staff does a great job of coming forward when there's updates there. So I don't need to go into too many of those details. I also attended with many of my seatmates the emergency management acknowledgement ceremony for the Amateur Radio Emergency Services. That was very informative. I, like Commissioner Grant, I didn't know much about that, so I learned a lot that day. I also attended the Local Progress Pride Caucus Leadership Committee, where we met to finalize our two thousand twenty-five statement of values. And we are planning an upcoming end-of-year celebration in in December. So that's great. This was the first year that Local Progress developed a Pride Caucus Leadership Committee, so it's been really an honor to serve on that committee. I attended the tree planting as well. Jazzcom met this week. We actually met last night, or it's Wednesday now, so we met two nights ago. We held our public hearing on the proposed two thousand twenty-six budget, and we reviewed shelter operations. There was no public comment for the public hearing. So that went pretty quick. But members did support maintaining two thousand twenty-five assessment levels with reducing reserve use by the forty thousand dollars and five forty thousand five hundred dollars. So that resulted in a proposed three point nine four million dollar budget. Staff reported a thirty-four percent increase in animal intake compared to last year and a fifteen percent rise in field calls. And we also discussed some of the positive things going on, like the shelters, community cat program and adoption events. And the director, Sarah Hawk, also is now representing Animal Services on another nationwide leadership role, which is really exciting. And there was also a question brought up about livestock. So I know that's always an interesting conversation to have at the county level. So there, Councilmember Malcolm Miller from Lacey brought forward a question about livestock. So that's a discussion that Animal Services will have on their agenda early in the new year. And this morning, I attended Orca's Finance Committee meeting as well as the regular Orca Board meeting. We continued to discuss, and we actually finally passed a motion related to the outdoor burning permits, which doesn't affect Thurston County because we're already doing permits for residential burning. But it would initiate a informational, voluntary education, outdoor burning notification system for other counties that are part of the region. So no policy changes or rule changes and no permit fees will be implemented. It's just for for informational purposes. So there were some questions about that. But Thurston County's been ahead of the curve for a while, so that won't impact our county. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. For me, I had a couple of days in the tri-cities with the Washington Counties Insurance Fund. And there was a short discussion of the potential to merge that group with the WAC Health Trust. And they're basically waiting for some information from WAC about what the specifics of that might look like. So there could be more to come on that. Did a lot of the things my seatmates mentioned, the beta testing for the FIFA app, the the planting. And I want to thank Bob Barnes for putting that together. We, his group has done. I I learned something every time I go out there, which was that the daffodil planting that we do has been done for twenty-seven years. I didn't realize. Daffodil.
Not dandelion. Not daffodil.
Daffodil's been there for twenty-seven years. I didn't realize it'd been there that long. The work that's done along that trail, you know, is done largely by volunteers. The county usually contributes something, whether it's extra mulch from Public Works or or some some staff effort. But, you know, it's largely volunteer-driven, and that helps that trail kind of be a showpiece of the county system. It's used tremendously and and, you know, supported and beloved by the public. So thank Bob for all the work he does out there. We we Christian the Ralph Monroe Memorial Grove because Ralph is always a big part of what goes on out there.
I learned something interesting.
Yes.
On Ralph Monroe Trail is Pierceall Pond, named after Dave Pierceall's father, which helped Ralph build the trail. I thought that was interesting. And there's Barnes Bog. That's cool.
Three of them are like a powered trio.
Very cool.
The the amateur radio group that focuses on that, I just want to thank them for for being there and teaching us. They were really enthusiastic about explaining what they do. And they obviously have a great love for for what they do. And it's not just a hobby. They actually train and they play a part in our emergency management system. So we thank them for that. That was really great. So that's about it for me. I just wanted to, before we adjourn, just let folks know. Next week, which would be a typical board meeting, that's why we're having this meeting today. There will not be a board meeting next week because of the Washington Counties, Washington State Association of Counties County Leadership Conference that all commissioners are encouraged to attend. And so we'll be in Spokane, and we'll have our next board meeting. Looking, can we clerk?
December second.
December second will be the next meeting, although there will be some budget public hearings on the first.
Monday, December first.
Yeah, so those are those are a big deal as well. But anyway, that's the end of the business agenda. Anything else? Okay, three thirty, we have four public hearings. So we'll be back in about fifty-two minutes to take those up. Thank you. We're adjourned.